Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council for Tuesday, March 12, 2024. It's great to see everyone out tonight. I love seeing a lot of people here in the audience. And so the first thing we'll do is have a moment of silent prayer. Please join me in standing for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. It looks like we have a full agenda tonight, and we're looking forward to hearing from some folks in the audience. We'll get started with the mayor's minute and council comments. And I just have a couple of comments I would like to make, and then I'll pass it to everyone else. But first, you all probably have read the papers and read the budget, saw the budget, that currently we're in the budget for $26.5 million towards the landfill. And we just want to say I'm very thankful, on behalf of the city, we are so thankful to Senator Pillion and Delegate O'Quinn, as well as the rest of the Southwest delegation for their work in keeping that money in the budget. It started out at 35, it went to 18, then it's back up to 26.5. And we, as you all know, we can really use that money. So we are so blessed and happy that we're at 26.5, and really thankful for the hard work that Senator Pillion did. He's on the Senate Appropriations Committee, and then also on the Conference Committee. So I know he had to get in there and go to battle for us, and I appreciate that. And then also with Delegate O'Quinn, also advocating for us all along the way. So if you see him out, or if you want to shoot him an email, make sure you let him know that we are thankful for that. Second, I would just like to say, so proud of our Virginia High Basketball Team playing in the state championship game the other day. It was a wonderful game, and Vice Mayor Holmes was able to go with me, as well as Councilman Farnham. And it was a wonderful game. I know we come up short, but there's still winners in our heart. So there's still winners to us and the city. So I'm so proud of them. They did a great job. So I'll pass it along and see if anyone else has comments tonight.
Just to reiterate, the basketball team, you know, great job to those guys. You know, they had a great season, a great season, and I can't wait to see what they do next year.
I'll just add to that. My wife got onto me for posting so many times about the basketball team on Facebook. So I was very excited. Great to join a couple of council members up here to go to the game. Our boys worked so hard, did such a great job. They really had a phenomenal year, making it to state, they're champions, right there with that. Also want to reiterate what the mayor said about the great work our legislators did. Bristol's in a unique situation right now. Our legislators did some great work getting funding for our city for the issues we're facing in the budget. Thank you to Senator Pillion for his work on the Senate Finance Committee, as well as the Conference Committee, and Delegate O'Quinn for just being a good advocate for our city up there as well. So they've done a phenomenal job, and we are very grateful for the efforts they put in and the results we're getting from that.
I just have a couple of things. You know, obviously, I'll echo my colleagues' comments. Congratulations to the Bearcats basketball team for a great job, and Coach Gallishaw for what he's done with that organization, with that program. And, you know, they made it to state, and, you know, next year I hope they make it back again. And if they play just as hard, I think they'll win it all next year. The other thing is, not city-related specifically, but I would remind everyone, you know, we're coming into spring now. I've seen a whole lot of motorcycle riders out in the past couple of weeks, and I've seen some people mowing their yards. So, you know, when you're driving, you know, watch out for motorcyclists. When you're mowing, don't blow your grass into the yard so they don't wreck their motorcycle. You know, just keep an eye out for them and be mindful and share the road.
We are about to go into a very difficult budget season, and we have a lot of good things going on in the city. We have a lot of good organizations in the city. We are going to hear from some of those this evening, as how they not only are looking for some money from the city, but how they look to turn that around and be very profitable, not only for the city government, but for our residents, which is who it all comes down to. But this is going to be a very difficult budget cycle. You know, you may have seen in the newspaper that we're looking to refine our process for how we handle incentives. And we've got to be very careful with how we go about giving anything out. I asked for some of the figures today, and the Assistant City Manager gave me some of the latest numbers. We, as a city, owe in total long-term obligations almost $300 million. Is 200, and just pennies short of $299 million. Across a population at last count of 17,219, we have a debt per capita of $17,361 and some change. We owe over $17,361 per person in the city. The state average is just short of $7,200. So we have about two and a half times the state average. We are going to have to be very careful with how we spend our money in this budget cycle. Thank you.
All right. City Manager comments.
Yes, Council. Just to follow up on a few things that you all have mentioned tonight, I do want to thank Senator Pillion and Delegate O'Quinn for all their hard work during this past General Assembly session in making sure that Bristol was not forgotten in the state budget. And by putting $26.5 million in the state budget for our landfill is very much appreciated, and I thank them for everything that they have done, and I hope the citizens will thank them as well. Once again, congratulations to the Virginia High School basketball team, they're state runner-up, and that's no small feat, so congratulations. It's Bristol Race Week, and so welcome to all the race fans here in Bristol for this week and this weekend. And I'll check the weather a little bit earlier, and it looks like the weather may be okay for the race this weekend, I hope so. And then finally, our first budget workshop is this Saturday, March 16, at 9:00 a.m. here in Council chambers.
All right. Thank you. All right. I'm looking for adoption of the agenda.
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second?
All right. We have an adoption of the agenda moved by Councilman Osborne and second by the Vice Mayor. Clerk, please call the roll. Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Nate? Yes. Okay, moving into the regular agenda, first up is a presentation of the school board budget.
So Council, we have Dr. Scott here tonight to present the school board's budget requests.
All right. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Mr. Council. I have Dr. Scott's intended for Bristol, Virginia Public Schools.
We've got a few slides this evening to talk our way through our budget proposal as approved by our board. Before we begin in earnest, a couple of preparatory remarks. One, the numbers here are based on the Governor's introduced budget bill from December 2023. So there are some things that have come out of the conference budget that would change this, but for all intents and purposes, we're presenting on the Governor's proposal and what the local effort is based on from his numbers. And secondly, as the Council has already alluded to, we understand that the financial situation of the city, and therefore, our presentation is all based on the idea that the City Council will do whatever they can to meet the minimum financial obligations, and we're not asking for anything above that. Do I have a way to advance these? Anytime that we undertake work, like the development of a budget, we have some touchstone statements that we keep in mind. So our vision statement for Bristol, Virginia Public Schools is preparing all students to thrive in a dynamically changing world. And that's in recognition of the fact that we have some, obviously, some core classes that we have students in every day, but we're also always looking to expand our curriculum and our course offerings to make sure that our students come out prepared to meet the world that is waiting for them. And that is, as indicated there in the statement, a dynamically changing world. Our budget priorities, I'm not going to read all seven of these, but to highlight a couple of things. With number one, the set aside funds to complete the renovation of Virginia Primary School. We have, I think, called a great deal of attention to the brand-new building beside the existing Van Pelt, but we also have renovations going on this summer at what will become Virginia Primary School. So on one campus, we'll have Virginia Primary and Virginia Intermediate, and so that first budget priority there is making sure that we are still taking care of the existing buildings that we have while we're constructing the new one. With number two, exploring creative ways to include emerging technology. We are very blessed to have been able to provide in our budget a new position for a STEM teacher and STEM curriculum at the new school. So that will be something that is on par with physical education classes and music classes, where all students will have access to this as they go through the intermediate school. Moving ahead to number five, with some of the funding that was received by all school divisions this year, the all-in funding from the state, we have reworked some of that money and put more of it into funding some positions that help us to combat chronic absenteeism. And as we think about our strategic plan and what kind of things are presenting themselves as challenges to our students, we understand that chronic absenteeism is not specific to Bristol, but it is a major issue in Bristol schools. So we have reorganized some of that funding to make sure that we keep in place the personnel who are working on cracking the code with chronic absenteeism. With number six, prioritizing positions that deal with the whole student and some of the behavioral supports that our students need. Again, some of the landscape that we're dealing with in this budget is that we have been blessed for the past several years, past three years anyway, to receive federal funding in the pandemic relief funds, or the ESER funds, and that money is leaving our budget. And so there are a lot of staff positions that we were able to fund with those temporary funds, and in the absence of that, it appears to be somewhat of a shortfall. And so we're having to decide what we can do to keep those positions intact, and unfortunately, there are some positions that we're going to have to part with. And so we've had some very difficult conversations with employees to say that it's, you know, through no fault of their own, but just a budgetary issue, that we're having to part ways with some very valuable employees. And with number seven, in every budget cycle, there's conversations about remaining competitive with our neighbors and making sure that we offer compensation packages that retain employees and also attract employees. And one of the things that we are accomplishing with our budget is with insurance rate increases in mind, instead of passing those along to the employees and raising the employee premiums, we are doing what we can to offset that and pay those out of our own budget, so as, you know, when we're faced with a rather modest compensation increase, that we're not at the same time pushing those insurance costs onto the employer. All right. So as we get into the discussion of required local effort, City Council is very much aware, I'm sure, that with the cost sharing in the state, the total cost of education roughly shakes out that the state pays roughly 70% of the cost for every dollar that is required, and the city pays the remaining 30 cents on that dollar. In the Governor's budget, it looked as though the required local effort for the city of Bristol was going to be just shy of $8 million, and that is not counting any money that is spent on local capital projects or debt service. It's nice to talk to City Council about this and know that you guys understand that cost sharing and don't have to do a quick five-minute lesson on where the money comes from. So as we get into our budget summary here, I'll get my pages caught up. Okay, you can kind of see the breakdown there of where anticipated beginning balances are and where some of the proposed expenditures are coming in and so forth. There's a lot of information on that slide, but the information that I think City Council is already somewhat familiar with, and nothing out of the ordinary on that. Moving into the general fund, again, these numbers that we've been presenting are based on the Governor's proposed budget from December. And in the Governor's proposal, there was the indication that there was money set aside for a 1% bonus or its equivalent in the Governor's bill language. The way that Bristol Public Schools are going to be approaching that is to give everybody a one-step increase, and that will achieve roughly a 1.25% increase across the board. We feel that doing a step increase is the more favorable approach, so that we don't have anybody frozen on salary scales and so forth, and end up in a situation we're trying to play catch-up later on. As mentioned earlier, this also takes into consideration covering the health insurance increases, and we are behind schedule on our bus replacement schedule. And so it's been, I think, a couple of years since we've been able to purchase a bus, and our fleet continues to age. And one of the phenomena that I think is known across the state is that ever since the onset of the pandemic, lead time on getting buses fixed or getting parts that you need eventually leads to buses sitting in a lot waiting to be fixed. And so a bus purchase, or possibly two, is very much in order for us. Now, the Governor's proposal and our response to that with a one-step increase is very modest compared to what our employees have had over the past three years. And over that span, our teachers, our support staff and so forth have seen about a 17.5% increase. And so while we always hope that we can do more than what the state says is the minimum, that doesn't look like it's going to be extremely practical this year. With the budget that we see coming out of the Conference Committee, though, that looks like it's more on the order of 3% in each of the two years of the biennium budget. That will depend largely on the local effort that we can get here. So one of the big discussion points for our budget is noticing that there are, there are two major things. I've already alluded to one with the absence of the federal dollars that have sustained positions for the past three years. We also have school consolidation, and we want to be very careful to say that the positions that are being eliminated are largely due to the loss of the federal dollars and not attributed so much to the school consolidation. We have made every effort that we can to keep as many people who are in positions right now, full-time licensed positions and full-time support positions, in the budget for next year, although, as you see on this slide, that hasn't been captured in every sense. So we have been able to retain all of the nurses that are currently employed. We realize that no matter how many buildings our students are in, we're still dealing with the same number of students and the same number of medical issues. So we have moved one nurse into a floater position, so she'll be able to attend to all schools. Per the standards of quality, the school-wide, or I'm sorry, the division-wide ratio for students to school counselors is supposed to be 320, I'm sorry, 1 to 325. And we have that throughout our school system. However, at our element, I'm sorry, at our middle school, that would not be the case. And so with one of the counselor positions, we are recommending to move that position to the middle school and make sure that they have a more favorable ratio there. And with four elementary schools consolidating into two, there was a surplus of one clerical position, and we have created a much-needed position at our transit department, and so that has kept one employee and a job there. We do have the elimination of three teaching positions, and attrition is pretty much handling that with retirement and non-renewal of a position. Right now, I'm hoping that we come back and later amend that second-to-last bullet point there, eliminating the one media specialist position. The position is going away, however, the number of staff that it affects is kind of a non-factor. We have reason to believe there's going to be a change in employment for one that will essentially allow us not to have to say goodbye to a teacher who would otherwise want to be there. And then all along, there has been planned attrition with custodial positions attributed to the school consolidation, and we're on track for that. I'm sorry, wrong link. Now, the positions lost as a result of the ESER funding leaving our budget, we had some difficult decisions to make, and we sat down in two-by-two meetings with our school board and walked them through some of these decisions, and kind of had a shopping cart approach, and said, with the growth margin that we're expecting from the Governor's budget, there's only so many dollars to meet the rest of the needs that we have. And so we were trying to prioritize needs as best we can. One of the positions that jumped out to us is the Bearcat Bridge position. Some of you may know Adriana Cox and her work at the high school, and I think she does a great job, not only for our students at our school, but for bridging that gap between our students and the needs of our community. So that is one position that we have moved into our local funding. We also have a student services teacher position that is a central office position, but this is somebody who has a division-wide view of our chronic absenteeism, and also our students that go in front of CPMT and FAP committees and so forth. So that is a position that we've secured in the local budget. One of the hot-button issues has been our behavior specialists. We were fortunate enough to have budgeted 13 of those positions through the ESER funding. However, when it comes down to who could be moved into the local budget and who cannot, we are going to be left with just five behavioral specialists. So that is going to be a loss that is felt in all of our schools, but we are fortunate enough to be able to keep five of the, it's currently staffed with 11, so there are going to be six valuable employees on the market, unfortunately. And then, I know the slide says eight, but two of those positions are already vacant. Okay, now, as I mentioned earlier with the all-in funding, one of the things that was somewhat counterintuitive as we were doing our planning is that we had originally planned to be separating with three attendance clerks and an attendance officer, but we were able to reorganize some of the funding in the all-in funding to secure those positions. So our attendance priorities remained intact. That does come at the expense of 15 classroom or transitional aides and two interventionists. Now, one of the questions that has come up a lot of times is, how does this affect our students with disabilities? And those positions are, in general, ed classrooms, not the special needs classrooms. So students who with disabilities who are used to having the extra supportive aides, that has been untouched. So those aides are still in place. Okay, and then through some indirect funding with our school nutrition program, we are able to add a maintenance position that will be paid in part by the local dollars, but also paid in part by indirect revenue coming through the school nutrition program. We have had a teacher in our childhood program over at the high school who had been paid generously through the Genian Foundation, and we're moving that position into our CTE funding. And the STEM position that I mentioned earlier, that was going to be one of our PE teachers that was going to be lost through consolidations, and we're able to retain him in a new position. So very happy to have been able to secure that position. So as we start to look at the entire revenue picture, at the top right of this table, you see the $1.3 million and the $400,000 underneath it. That was essentially the growth margin that we were expecting based on the Governor's bill, and assuming that the locality would meet, the local effort indicates a $261,000 increase in the City Council's contribution over last year. So our total growth margin there is about just shy of $2 million, and based on Mrs. Jones' calculations, from what we're seeing on the Conference Committee, that number may jump up closer to $4 million in the proposed budget. Then this is a breakdown of where those expenditures go, and I think it's a little bit easier to see on this slide. You can see the bulk of our expenditures are related to compensation that is directly in instruction. We do obviously have administrative and transportation technology costs and so forth, but I think that these proportions are right where they ought to be, that most of the money in our budget goes to compensating our qualified teachers and the support positions around them. So there are some things that, in our economic position, that we were not able to capture in our budget, and I'm of the belief that we need to keep our school board and keep City Council informed of the things that we want, but we're not able to capture in the current budget. There was a need for a special ed teacher, and we believe that as that becomes a more pressing need, there will be money that maybe precipitates in the budget later on in the school year, if that is something that we have to do so. There are some contingencies there that we might be able to find that money later on. As far as a second licensed ESL teacher, we do have a growing ESL population, and right now, only one licensed staff member to be a case manager for all of those, and it's almost at a tipping point, but it's something that we can defer, we believe, for another year. If more money is found through the final state budget, one of the things that we would be remiss if we didn't try to go after would be additional behavioral specialists. We also know that our bus fleet, even our car fleet, there are some things to address there, but we're going to defer those for now. Our transportation building is needed in roof repair, and that is something that if we can capture with year-end funds, we may be able to do that, but otherwise, that would have to be deferred also, as along with some other cosmetic fixes at our schools. Now, the door lock upgrades is something that I'm very passionate about, and we know that there's a lot of time and a lot of money that is invested in upgrading door locks. So we're hopeful that there are some school security grants that we can track down and get that work underway and not have that necessarily be a hit on the local budget. So at this point in the game, again, based on the Governor's budget, we are looking at an increased local effort of $261,000. That brings the total local request to $8.3 billion. And then regarding our new school and the debt service on that, with the School Construction Assistance Program, we received money in the budget, the last biennium budget, and we have $385,000 secured to pay the principal in the upcoming year. And through the entitlement program, this was money that could be broken out over three years or over two years, and so we are looking to see what the contribution from the city will help determine how that money is spent. And then the last part of the interest that is not covered by the School Construction Assistance Program is something that would remain to be determined based on how everything else shakes out. With that, I thank you for your time, and I will try to field any questions that the Council may have, and if I can't, then I know Ms. Tammy Jones can.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Scott, and I'll turn it over to see who has questions.
I've got a couple. First, thank you for taking the time. So one thing, just so we're clear first, on the employee cuts. So it's a total of 16, and part of them are from the closing of the three elementary schools, and part of them are from loss of funding, right? Is it breakdown 10 and 6?
Not sure if those numbers are completely accurate. I know with, right now, when I'm thinking about it in terms of the actual people in the positions, we have fewer people in the positions than what we had budgeted for. But when we're looking at loss of positions, I think it's higher than 10 and 6.
Okay.
I counted 32. Would that be more accurate?
So there are 15 transitional aides, which is a big part of that. That's out of the ESER funds, and then there's six more behavioral specialists, so that's up to 21 there.
Yep.
Two interventionists.
Media specialists.
That's what I did.
Yeah.
So one of your first things that you mentioned back on one of your earliest slides was your priorities going into the budget. was your priorities going into the budget. Might have been on your...
Think about the second slide maybe.
Number three.
Yeah, on your, yeah, second real slide there. So, item one is talking about completing renovation at Virginia Primary School at Van Pelt and then looking at facility needs at the high school and middle school. What projects are going on at the primary school?
So, at the primary school in Van Pelt right now, the way that school is constructed, down each of the academic wings, there are kind of these open pods. And so, the renovations this summer are to provide walls in those so that we can have, you know, more secured learning environments there. And as far as the locks and so forth, making sure that those pod doors can be secured with push-button locks from the classroom side of those hallway doors. Then, there's also some fire system upgrades going on there too.
Okay, and then what are, because I know one of, I think one of my concerns and I've heard it expressed by other members of council now and previously, you know, building the new school, renovating Van Pelt, you know, are not the be all end all because the high school is aging and the middle school is over 100 years old.
Yes, sir.
So, what are, I guess, what are kind of your short-term, midterm and long-term plans for how to keep those buildings where they need to be?
Well, we have recently gone through the RFP process and awarded Thompson and Litten with the A&E contract there. And our conversations with them, I think, are going to be, how do we preserve some of the historical aspects of Virginia Middle School for one, but we're also looking at some water infiltration problems that we're starting to see there around the foundation of the school. So, making sure that those classrooms are up to par with the, you know, the new school is best we can. With our high school program, that building has been stitched together over many decades and I think just making sure that we continue to meet the curricular needs in there and as far as renovating for additional STEM spaces and things like that, making sure that those classrooms are outfitted as adequately as we can. We've also recently done renovations there with single-user bathrooms and so forth. So, I think making sure that that is, stays a first-class facility for our students is a priority.
So, there's no emergent emergency situation that...
No emergency situations.
Just keeping it upkeep.
Yeah, well, and if I may rephrase that gently, I think that making sure that we are on top of our classroom door lock situation, it is urgent, but it's not a huge structural change.
Not the kind of situations that we've seen at Stonewall Jackson and Highland View.
Correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
My last question is pertaining to purchasing new buses.
Okay.
So, I know you said that it's been a couple, I know it's been a couple of years since buses have been purchased. Is, one of the boards I sit on buys city buses and the turnaround is about a year. Is that about the same for school buses?
Well, with state contracts, there's always buses being manufactured and so with the diesel buses, I think that we're able to forecast that out far enough that they arrive when we need them to. We have, at this point, turned down programs to be part of electric vehicles. I don't know that we want to be one of the test candidates for those, so still looking at diesel buses and I think we can still forecast those out with, you know, six-month lead time maybe.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think there had been grants previously for electric school buses.
They are, but they generally come at the expense of decommissioning a bus and right now, if we were to do that, I'm not sure that we would be able to keep enough buses on the road when we need them.
Decommissioning a pre-existing fossil fuel bus?
Yes, sir.
I think that's an admirable goal to work toward, having electric buses, you know, especially if there are grants for it, but you know, if you can't manage it with the amount of fleet that you might lose from that, that might not be feasible for you right now, but...
And we've explored options with lease programs for the purchase of the diesel buses, but we think that right now, in the current financial climate, that we'd be better off trying to track down one to two buses in the current budget cycle rather than being, you know, attached to something long-term.
That's what I've got.
All right.
Well, I'll follow up with that, just for curiosity's sake. How many buses do you have in your fleet currently?
I think it's about 16 right now.
Okay. And I just want to add too, I appreciate you coming here tonight and speaking to us and presenting this. I do understand that, and I will say this every year I'm here, your board is in a unique situation where they have to put together a budget without any way to pay for it, so I fully appreciate that you have to come to us and ask, you have to come to the state and ask, so I appreciate that and I know that dynamic. So, I appreciate you presenting this, I appreciate some of the measures in there. I know the behavior specialist, losing six of those is difficult. I'm glad you found a way to keep five with the ESSER funding ending. And then also, I'd be remiss if I didn't advocate for that second ESL person. I know your first one very well and she does a great job, so I will toss that out there.
Thank you.
If I understand correctly, the amount that you're asking of 8.3 million, an increase over last year of 261,000 is an increase in the required local effort and that ask is just to meet the required local effort.
That is correct, sir. Yes, sir.
So, basically, you've trimmed your budget to the point where you're able to make it, not easily, but make it using just the required local effort.
That's correct.
And obviously, anything above that would be very useful, but we'll see what we can do then.
Absolutely. And unfortunately, any help that we've received from the conference committee comes with similar local requirements with that. And so, you know, I don't know what the survival rate is of that budget when it comes to veto season from the governor, but...
Do you know if there are grants available for diesel buses? I know that for our local transit department, they're often unable to get fairly hefty. I think they're normally like a 90-10 local, a 10% local match on transit buses.
I am not as familiar with that, but we'll be happy to look into that.
If we can reduce the local portion, then we might be able to justify a little more if we see that our funds are going farther.
One thing I'll tell you, Mr. Pollard, from my experience with the District III Board, I don't remember what the term is, I think it's 5210 funding or 5208 funding or something, that buses for transit services are looked at differently than buses for educational systems, because a lot of those grants, I believe, come from DOT. So, I think it would probably be different. I mean, but yeah, if there's grants available for any kind of buses, we should try and get in on them.
Well, I just wanted to throw out there, I don't have any specific questions, but just thank you for presenting this to us and, you know, I know we talked a little bit about this budget. It's always a tough time during budget time and this is more a short-term because it's just this year that we'll have to look at. And I appreciate the conversations about the, kind of what I'll call the midterm and long-term things, like the middle school, the high school, the buses, the, you know, sports fields, different things that we'll need to continue to talk about going forward. It just, it seems like over the past, you know, five years, 10 years, we've been talking a lot about the elementary school. So, now it's like, okay, that project is looking great and coming along, we just need to figure out, you know, what's next on our to-do list, long-term. So, maybe it'd be good to have more conversations in the future, maybe it's a few council members and school board members, just so we all keep communicating well going forward, so... But thank you for being here.
It is my pleasure and thank you for the relationship. I believe it to be a very healthy one and I know that when we have concerns and can share them with you, I know that this board listens and I appreciate that.
We appreciate you being here tonight. There was just a couple of things that stood out to me, they've already kind of been touched on, but one of the things in the big discussion in talking about building a new school was to make sure there was no positions lost and so that came up a lot. So, I know it's been a difficult time for you all to look at the, look at your budget and determine which positions to cut. And I know that number is pretty high and, but I know it's not all because of the consolidation of schools and I think that's a good point to make because that was something that was discussed a lot in our community, was if we consolidate schools, then a lot of people are going to lose their jobs. So, I think it's important to stress that, you know, those were funded under the ESSER funding and it's not just because of the consolidation of schools. So, thank you again for coming tonight and we look forward to our continued conversations as we move through this budget season.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay, next on the agenda is a presentation of Non-Mandated Outside Agencies. No one has signed up for public comment and so we will move right into the presentations. First on the list is Believe in Bristol.
Hello.
Hello.
How are you all doing this evening?
Great.
Thank you for having me. I'm Maggie Elliott, I'm the Executive Director for Believe in Bristol. Ah, she works, I love it when it works. So, we have a new mission and vision, but really, nothing has changed. It's more concentrated and unified. So, our mission is to unify and strengthen downtown Bristol by promoting its history, facilitating future growth and building a vibrant community of arts, culture, heritage, music and economic strength. Our vision for downtown Bristol is a vibrant collaborative community of Tennesseans and Virginians, celebrating our shared heritage, enjoying a vigorous economy and providing abundant opportunities for living, working, shopping and playing. So, how do we accomplish these things? Believe in Bristol is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization and we are the Main Street Program for both Tennessee and Virginia. We follow four main points that are directed from us, to us, from National Main Street Center and we do receive resources from both sides of the state line because of that accreditation. So, the first and foremost is our organization. So, that is our 501(c)(3) nonprofit status. Our Board of Directors is a conglomerate of city leaders, business owners, property owners, lovers of downtown and a collection of lovers of Bristol in general. So, they oversee our budget, our volunteers, our annual board retreat and also our other solicitations and regulations and fund paperwork. But those are the wheels on the bus. Design is the next point. Design is all how your downtown looks. Is it clean? Is it friendly? Can people find their way around, both vehicular and pedestrian? There's also a huge residential component to our design focus. Most people don't know that we actually have over 90 lofts within our downtown district. So, that's a huge market for us to be promoting to and working for. We also have a downtown speaker system that was installed about a year and a half ago and so we stream that with different fun music and ambiance for our downtown visitors on a daily basis. Downtown beautification projects also fall within our design category as well as facade improvement. I'm going to get in particular about what we have lined up here in a little bit as far as those design projects go. Economic vitality is our next point. That is making sure that we have a good business mix within our downtown, making sure that our vacancy is low. We are at our lowest vacancy rate in over 15 years in downtown and so we're very proud of that. We want to make sure that we're continuing to fill those gaps in the market and making sure that our businesses are equipped with sustainable resources to be able to keep their doors open. The ways that we provide that is through our downtown entrepreneur grant, which is actually why I walked in late this evening because we kicked off our six-week training program. Tonight, we have 20 new and expanding businesses who are participating in our training program that will culminate to a pitch-style competition in the beginning of May. We anticipate three to five businesses being awarded a total of $50,000 in grant funds. Another way we execute our business sustainability is through our downtown merchant meetings. We have a networking program called Business in Brews where it's a downtown stakeholder community gathering and we really hit the hard topics that people are concerned about. Most recently, of course, we discussed our homeless population and ways that we could be a part of the solution and not just necessarily contributing to the problem and ways that it is impacting our businesses and making sure that Believe in Bristol is an appropriate liaison between those stories. Education guidance and support, we have great partnerships with the Small Business Development Center and are able to provide free resources for our downtown businesses through those resources. And we also maintain that available property list that is ever-changing. The last, I would say, year and a half, there's been a significant amount of properties that have changed hands, most for the better. And so, it's really been a great resource for us to be able to keep up with that and in turn, fill them with people from our entrepreneur grant and business competition. Promotions, this is the one that people probably know us most for. We stay busy on a year-round basis with different promotions and activities for downtown. So, some of those you can see here, we have, of course, Border Bash Summer Concert Series, we have our Star Spangled Fourth of July Celebration and First Fridays, we've really kicked up over the past year. Those are 12 monthly events every year. Our Dancing Downtown Adult Prom, if you haven't partook in that large fundraiser for us, it is a load of fun. You just missed it, it was about a week and a half ago, but don't worry, we'll have one again. As far as Christmas goes, we stay busy with our Christmas Open House, Small Business Saturday and the Christmas tree lighting, which we have big plans for this year as well. We were able to expand a little bit with the removal of the previous tree and we're excited when everyone saw the backup tree, as we called, and they didn't even realize it was there or that it was as big as it was. So, we're excited to be able to grow that even more. And then Halloween was a new blast for us this past year, State Street Trickery and the parade was also new. But we don't just promote our own events or plan our own events, we also promote all of the additional events that take place within our downtown districts. So, those are large-scale events, but those are also small promotions that our businesses have that they might not have the marketing resources to be able to put a lot of advertising behind those things and that's where we come in. Really how we narrow down our project listing, or our project task list, is two transformation strategies. Those are food experience and arts and entertainment. We want to keep the variety of culinary options that we have downtown and also expand on those culinary options. We also want to expand additional events based around those culinary events. And then, of course, I don't really have to explain our arts and entertainment identity and heritage and being able to leverage that even more than what we already have. Excuse me. These are what we call our transformation strategies. They're recommended several years ago, actually, from National Main Street and we've continued to implement them and it's been a really great way for us to focus in on things that we do for downtown. The nice thing about transformation strategies are they are unique to our community. So, our friends in Johnson City or our friends in Abingdon or even in Asheville would have completely different transformation strategies. We want to be Bristol and these play well to what Bristol is good at. We're not limited to those two either. We understand that we're not always going to fit in a box, but this is a nice way for us to be able to have a nice rounded identity and a way to say no at the end of the day to make sure that we're staying true to Bristol. So, important things for why downtown Bristol is important, it's a huge representation of the community's tax base. So, the local, the local real estate assessment just within the downtown footprint is over 20, is almost 21 million. You can see those restaurant lodging and admissions collected, tax collection have increased significantly over the past several years. So, people want to do business downtown, people want to eat downtown, people want to stay downtown and so supporting that is imperative. A nice look at Bristol, downtown Bristol by the numbers, you can see over the, these are numbers pulled from 2006, which is our accreditation year start. So, our total investment into downtown is over 70, is almost 72 million. There's 1,191 full-time employees for downtown. I know you always like to hear, how does that break down? 505 is what is on the Virginia side of town and so that makes collectively downtown Bristol on the Virginia side of town your large, or your third-largest employer. So, for reference, electromechanical is at 369 and Hard Rock is at 584 and downtown is at 505. So, competitive numbers as far as the employment goes. And then, our total residential units, I had referenced 91 currently and some currently under renovation. Our total downtown businesses continues to rise, we're at 172 currently and you can see how the nice blend of different sectors are covered within the downtown district. We've had some really incredible wins in 2023. We did have staff growth and in turn, got a new look, so we're excited to be able to have a nice cleaner image for our community's representation. In doing so, we did get, along with the new logo, we did undergo a brand-new website as well. In just the first six months, we welcomed over 31,000 unique visitors to our website and our... our website, um, and our, over the course of two thousand and twenty-three, we increased our Facebook reach by sixty-eight percent, and we increased our Instagram reach by a hundred and sixty-three percent. So our marketing efforts over the past year have, um, been instrumental, and, um, we are continuing to see the impacts of that. Um, of course, I'd be remiss to say that, um, our largest win of two thousand and twenty-three was, um, was not bringing back fireworks for Celebrate Bristol. Um, it was wonderful. Um, thank you to both of our cities to contribute to that, and so we were able to bring back, um, in the, in the final minutes. We didn't even think we would have a supplier, um, but we had the confidence from the cities and your commitment to help us pull that off, and so we appreciate that, and we hope to continue it again this year. Of course, we can't have fireworks one year and then take them away. Um, but we were able to, um, pull some really wonderful numbers from, um, Placer AI, and so we were able to track that. Um, we welcomed over seven thousand people for the State Street Parade alone and over twenty thousand over the course of the events for the Star Spangled Holiday. So that's over the entire course of downtown. Um, we had just highlighted State Street to be able to get the parade traffic, um, and we were very close to the eight thousand mark, so we were really excited to see that. Um, we did shorten the route, um, to be able to condense it and build our entries, and that was a wonderful opportunity for us. It's way too hot to have that, that longer parade, and so we really saw a positive impact from that. The Halloween Parade was insanely amazing. Um, so our State Street Trick or Treat, which is always a community favorite, brought out numbers like we've never seen before. Of course, weather was wonderful, and so that's what we can always pray to have in, in the future of trick-or-treats, but, um, we were very lucky for that, and then we worked with our downtown merchants to have a full day of fun-filled activities for the family in different age brackets, um, and it was really a wonderful festive day that capped off with our inaugural State Street Parade, um, which included over forty entries, and the day's traffic, um, blew us away with over ten thousand, um, for October twenty-eighth. Um, for a first-time event, um, we were thrilled with that number. Um, so Believe in Bristol brings several things to the table, as of course we come to you to ask for things as well. Um, so what we actually have worked on, um, during the two thousand and twenty-three calendar year was acquiring some grant money to be able to leverage against, um, or leverage, um, again, yeah, a leverage against our appropriations. So facade improvement and public art, um, are currently underway. Facade improvement, we currently have our, um, applications open for property owners to submit applications towards facade renovations. Um, we have twenty thousand in grant funds from Believe in Bristol towards property owners, and they have to match that twenty thousand, so that is guaranteeing, um, a minimum of forty thousand in rehab of historic buildings over the next, um, twelve months. Um, we also have fifty thousand in grant funds to go towards a mural specifically in Bristol, Virginia. Um, procurement of that artist's design and setup is, um, currently in, um, in conjunction with our Arts and Culture Committee. Um, pedestrian slash Johnnywood Plaza, um, some people refer to as different things, but, um, being of the timing, I'm going to refer to as Johnnywood Plaza. Um, so beautification project, um, we've been working with Bristol, Virginia Public Works, um, in correlation with funds that we've received from, um, the Department of Housing and Community Development for a downtown investment grant. So we have ten thousand dollars in grant funds from Believe in Bristol, um, to put towards cleanup. Um, we have already started the cleanup initiative. Um, a lighting installation will, should actually be done in the next six weeks or so. Um, the sculpture repainting in this public space, and then, um, really Phase One is to be completed by the end of spring two thousand and twenty-four. So as our warmer weather, um, flows in, we've got an opportunity to make that space well-lit and, uh, make it more appeasing for parking on that side. That's an underutilized parking space. It's also an opportunity for, um, our unhoused to, um, linger, and so we want it to make sure it is a nice, safe space for people to walk through, and lighting is a great deterrent for nefarious activities. Um, pending the summer, um, it's not official, but I think it's official enough that I'm going to go on the record and say this. So, um, the, the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development, um, is offering a small area planning grant, um, that is specific to Bristol, Virginia, as it is the state funds, in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. And, um, how they have described the small area planning grant is areas of importance that have maybe not had resources prior to, um, to really have a, a plan in place for continued growth. So some areas we were looking at, um, with staff recommendation is since we pretty much have a hold on the Johnnywood Plaza, Phase One at least, to look at Cumberland Square Park and the gateways into Cumberland Square Park being Lee Street, Moore Street, and Piedmont. Um, so there could be a planning grant, um, coming our way in the value of fifty thousand dollars, um, for, for that tiered project, which could be a really great opportunity for us to start chipping away at. What else is next? Um, I'll be brief on these. Um, so Christmas atmosphere, I, I kind of breezed through that before, but we want more trees. We plan to bring in more trees. We plan to bring in more photo opportunities, um, more atmosphere along State Street. Um, I know we've already had separate conversations about different, um, replacement things for, um, lighting, et cetera, um, so working towards those enhancements. Um, downtown murals, and then other, other public art projects. I did mention the Bristol, Virginia Public Mural, or Bristol, Virginia Mural, but we also have our outside-the-box, um, traffic control wraps, which should be done by the beginning of summer, um, and other small pop-up art, art projects that we're really looking forward to. Community events, of course, we're, we're hoping to bring that, back those fireworks and, um, continue to grow our, our holiday features, but then also our First Friday programming. Development of a coworking space, um, this has been on this list forever, um, but lease negotiations are almost complete. Um, downtown beautification, um, is that pedestrian plaza, and we also have a correlating project on the Tennessee side of town. Um, and then Restaurant Week, um, being able to incorporate more of those transformation strategies in different ways that we can do those through First Pr- First Friday or standalone events. Um, this is how our ask breaks down. Um, you'll see there is one specific, um, addition. This is a larger ask. We asked for fifty last year. Um, we end up, we ended up receiving fifty-six because of the additional allocation, last-minute allocation for the fireworks. Um, so we are asking for seventy-five to round up to be able to, um, to match that fireworks to the Tennessee side of town and also match the ask to the Tennessee side of town. So is this, this is a mere ask to be able to do, um, equal fun on both sides of that state line. So of course, we want to grow our existing things, bring in new things. Um, New Year's Eve is a big conversation for us right now, and additional creative placemaking projects, um, and areas of improvement that we see that could use some, um, some extra attention to make sure that our downtown is safe. Why does any of this matter? I won't read this to you. It's in your packet. But, um, downtown is owned by everyone. Um, I normally start out my presentation with this, but I'm ending it. Um, the last point there is why is downtown important? It is our oldest and earliest stories and our, um, where our history started, our cultural center of our community, but overall, as our postcard location, it is owned by everyone. And so taking investment away from that is going to be detrimental through and through. All right, I kind of wrapped that up less emphatically, but I appreciate you all, and I would love to entertain questions. I tried to get more into what we're doing specifically because we had all, you know, we've all worked together, at least a year in, so I figured you knew the nuts and bolts of, of who we are, but I wanted to kind of break down some of those special, special projects.
All right. Thank you for that presentation, Maggie, and I'll open it up to see who all has questions, and I'll have a few at the end.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thanks. We've been through this a time or two, and, uh, you know, I always knew there was stuff happening in downtown Bristol, and then I came here and I realized, oh, wow, there's a whole lot more happening than I even realized. Um, and the company I work for opened up a spot on State Street a few months ago, and now it's like I get an email from Believe in Bristol about every thirty seconds about stuff happening in downtown Bristol, so.
We do communicate with our merchants.
Yes, you guys stay busy for sure. So, so thank you. I just, I think we have the best downtown anywhere, anywhere in southwest Virginia and northeast Tennessee. We, we've got a lot going on downtown, so thank you all for the work you do.
Thanks for picking downtown.
So I'll jump in and just add to that. Thank you, Maggie, for the work you all do, you, Emily, Emily, the whole team. We appreciate it. Um, we were in a meeting earlier today, and someone described downtown Bristol as the face of the city, the face that people see when they come in, and we've got a beautiful face because of the work you all do. That was kind of weird saying that.
That's okay. We've known each other a long time. I didn't take it weird.
But I appreciate that. Um, just a couple of the things you're going through, I just, the First Fridays, my wife and I have been to several of those lately, and it's, there's always a crowd downtown. Like the December one, it was cold, it was frigid, we were freezing, and it was packed. So thank you for doing that, bringing folks downtown. Halloween Parade was, was awesome. My wife and I like Halloween, the creepy, the kooky, and all, all that, and it was, it was a lot of fun seeing that, so thank you for being creative and doing something that nobody else around here does. So with that, I, I appreciate the work you do. Our downtown is a vibrant part of our community. It's the heartbeat, um, and we, we are very blessed to have you and your team, so thank you.
Thanks.
Well, uh, first, I'd like to applaud the Vice Mayor for saying we have a beautiful face. We're all working really hard, and we appreciate, we appreciate that. We all fixed our hair today. Um, no questions, I just want to brag on, on the stuff you all do. I mean, it, you know, it's, it's truly tremendous. You know, just the list of all the events throughout the year, the fireworks, all, everything you said. You know, I, I missed the adult prom this year.
I noticed.
Yeah, I saw some cool pictures. I, I was, I was at it the first year you did it, and it's a fun time. It's a really cool time, and it's, it's the kind of thing that really gets people talking, um, about wanting to be in downtown Bristol, specifically as the destination. You know, a lot of people go downtown because that's where fun stuff is, but, you know, events like that are a really good conversation starter for, man, I really want to go downtown. Downtown Bristol is where it's at, where it's going on, so, you know, stuff like that, you know, is, is exactly what we need, and I, I appreciate that you mix in events like that that are more, you know, adult-oriented with stuff like the Trick or Treat or the Halloween Parade and Trick or Treating, which gets families downtown, and you get a really good mixture, so, um, really appreciate everything you do.
Thank you. And to that point, we've, the First Fridays has given us a really great opportunity to, to hit several markets that we haven't in a really long time. We, we know that we're not going to hit everyone or make all businesses or merchants happy with every First Friday event, but, um, giving a little bit of love to each one, um, I will say the Coco Crawl in January blew us away, um, because we saw high schoolers out. We haven't pulled high schoolers out. I can tell you when. Um, so we're really trying to be strategic about those things, and also we're not just about drinking downtown. That's an important thing as well, um, and offering different, different opportunities and safe, um, safe ways for people to enjoy downtown. That was actually one thing that I was really excited about with our entrepreneur grant applications this year is the conversations about, um, safe places to socialize, um, and we are really excited to be able to rally around those businesses and, um, and incorporate them into our infrastructure. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to incorporate that as well.
All right. Um, I just wanted to add a couple of things. First, thank you for the presentation, and thank you for all the work that you are doing downtown. I've enjoyed so many of the events, and I know we've all talked about those on and on, but some, a couple of things I wanted to focus on. Um, I appreciate how you're proactive on going after the grants for the Entrepreneur Challenge, which you've done now for many years, um, through the DHCD. Is that through the Community Business Launch Program?
Yes.
Yes, so I'm so thankful that you're doing that because what that does then is help somebody go into business that maybe he's been wanting to have that startup business but didn't have that little bit of more money or whatever it took to get them to that point. So thank you for that program. I think it's a great program. Um, and then also on the facade improvement and the public art grant, I think that that's another big one. Um, the Johnnywood Plaza area, um, on the downtown investment grant, I'm really interested in that one. Um, I've been having meetings, uh, the Vice Mayor and I, with, uh, community folks on, um, how we can find solutions for our downtown for, um, you know, people lingering around or things that going on that could scare others away from going. So I appreciate you being proactive on that. I do have a question, um, because I know the city, we have been talking a lot about, um, what we would like to do with Cumberland Park and being proactive on ourselves on going after some of the grants. So on the DHCD planning grant for the Cumberland Park, who are you working with on the city with that?
So we, all we've had so far is a consultation with, um, Virginia Main Street. Um, so Courtney with DHCD had put, um, the Arnett Muldro, um, consulting team, um, had come in town and had done a stakeholder meeting with our board. Um, Jay sat in on that conversation. Um, we didn't know where it would begin. I definitely didn't think we would land in Cumberland, um, but we ended up on a walking tour, and, um, the consultant and Virginia Main Street were able to see the connecting points, and since I know Mac Chapman has shared some, some ideas and plans, and I know that there's some, um, potential parking things over there, too. So it's definitely a, a bigger conversation, but we were excited at the potential to bring some funds to the city to sit down and actually nail down what the future of that park and the area around that park looks like.
Right, and that's one of the things that's been one of my main focus, and I know most of us up here on the improvements for the park.
Mm-hmm.
So I just want to make sure that the city don't put in a grant for something you're putting in, you know.
And this would just be the planning, yes. This would just be the planning portion of it, so, um, it would appear as if Believe in Bristol would probably have that covered, and then any implementation grants, um, we could work on in the future, so.
Because I believe the one we're looking at, too, so let's talk afterwards, because we were looking also at a planning grant, correct, on, uh, what we were thinking about doing, so let's.
Yeah, and it's not live yet, so I got a little, like, arm nudge. No one send this to, no, I'm just joking. Um, no, but we're confident that we'll be able to apply some sort of resource, and if there's a different area that we would rather look at and not Cumberland, then that's fine, too. We can, we can apply it somewhere else or minimize it to maybe those gateways into Cumberland instead of Cumberland entirely, but.
No, I think, I think it's going to require quite a bit of funding.
Oh, definitely.
Because we'll have to do multiple studies, different, from engineering studies to different things for the layout of it, but, um, I know, but going back to my point, thank you for being proactive on doing those and all the other grants that you received.
So we were, we were lucky to have it, but it was good timing, I would say, um, especially because other conversations with our city board liaisons and committee liaisons about, um, the Piedmont Bridge, et cetera. So there's a, we're, we're trying to, as that kind of, that opportunity kind of fell on our lap, um, really what it is, it's leftover COVID funds that if they're not earmarked by the end of the fiscal year, um, they'll evaporate. Um, and so that, those are the funds that they are hoping to distribute, but I've gotten the nudge that Bristol is, um, in the top, so.
Yeah.
We should have that coming down the pipeline.
Okay, that's great news. Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for having me. I appreciate you all.
All right. Next on the list, uh, Birthplace of Country Music.
I'm Leah Ross, Executive Director of Advancement, and I'm here to request funding for the Birthplace of Country Music. I gotta figure out how to work. We are requesting fifty thousand dollars in funding from the city of Bristol for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. That's what I'm going to be talking about today. As you know, we've, I've said our mission before, but I'd like to repeat it one more time. The Birthplace of Country Music seeks to perpetuate, promote, and celebrate Bristol's rich musical heritage, to educate and engage audiences worldwide regarding the history, impact, and legacy of the nineteen twenty-seven Bristol session, and to create recognition, opportunities, and economic benefit for our local and regional communities. And I think you'll see in my presentation that we are doing those things. So as you know, we have three branches. The first branch I'm going to talk about today is Radio Bristol. Radio Bristol is our radio station that we have inside the museum, and it operates twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, uh, with, uh, programs. We have listeners in fifty states and a hundred and forty countries, and we have really over a twenty-million-dollar footprint. One of the, a couple of things that's exciting for us right now, our footprint on Farm and Fun Time, on T, Farm and Fun Time, on our PBS stations was just recently approved by NEDA. It's the National Education Telecom Alliance, and what this means is that if a PBS station wants it, it's already being approved educationally, and it can go on PBS stations without going through the process that they used to have to in the past. So one of the things that's really exciting for us, we just, uh, I went to, um, Nashville last week, but I called to get a appointment with Nashville PBS, because we had met with them about a couple of years ago about, um, airing our Farm and Fun Time show on theirs. But when I called, they said we do not need to meet because they just got approval to start showing it on Saturday nights on Nashville PBS on Austin City Limits, which is. on Nashville PBS on Austin City Limits, which is a wonderful opportunity to go right after Austin City Limits. That's huge. And Nashville PBS serves 2.4 million people in Middle Tennessee and Southern Kentucky. So, that was very exciting for us when we heard that. Next, I'll talk about Bristol Rhythm and Roots Reunion. We had, last year, and these are numbers from last year. We had over 170 million combined audience of media outlets covering our festival. We brought in some from across the pond, but they were from all over the country. Our attendance last year was an increase of 5,000 from 2022. We see that bouncing back since the pandemic. And if our ticket sales are any indication of what we can expect this year, I think we'll have another record year because we are already at 55%, I think 50, 55% of where we need to be to get to that number. We had $16 million worth of advertising equivalents of combined media coverage last year, which was very huge. If you look at some of the places we were, we were in Rolling Stone, Tennessee, the Tennessee in Travel and Leisure. We were on NPR and on Wide Open Country. We had 5.2 million festival media impressions, which is unreal. And we saw, you know, back, I think it was in 2015, we did an economic impact that showed the festival had a 16.1 million economic impact. We are planning on doing that maybe next year or the next year to update those because we think those numbers will really increase from there. There we go. Now, I'll talk about the Birthplace of Country Music Museum. I missed one. Okay. One of the things that we wanted to point out is that last year, our Virginia admission taxes from all our programming, Rhythm and Roots, Farm and Fun Time, and all our special events was $76,833. One thing that we were really excited, you know, we have special exhibits every year that rotate. But one of the ones that we did, that we've done in-house was Women in Old Time Music Special Exhibit, which really got a lot of attention. We had a lot of attendance coming to see it. And one of the things that we're proud of, it is that we have taken it down now and we've got another one that's getting ready to open. But one of the things that we did when we, because we curated that, we curated it and built it to where it could travel. And we already have this many places on the books to travel to over the next few years. And we have others that are interested. We were, first, we're going to the Mount Airy Museum of Original History. From there, it will go to the Oxford Historical Area Historical Association in Pennsylvania. From there, it will travel to the Creative Alliance in Maryland. It's going to go from there to the East Tennessee Historical Society in Knoxville. And from there, it will travel to West Virginia, to the Augusta Heritage Center. And one of the things that we were proud of in this exhibit, not only that it was self-curated, but it really highlighted the importance of women in country music and even today's music. And to get a rubber stamp from Dolly Parton, You Think You've Made It, she talked about it and how great it was. And she said, the one thing that I took hold of is was her mother could have been in that exhibit because she's the one that taught him how to sing and how to write stories and things.
I thought it was great, too, that you all even got Governor Youngkin and his, and the First Lady down and to go through that exhibit as a.
They did. And when they got there, their handler, I guess that's what they're calling, are they? Whoever tells them where to be, when to be, said, we only have 20 minutes. And they left an hour and a half later. So, they took more than 20 minutes. We bring in visitors from all over the country and the world. Last year, one of our tour groups came from Australia, which was very exciting for us. We have visitors from across the pond and around the globe, like I said. We target the heritage traveler who's likely to spend more money and stay longer. We found that out. And visitors, you know, we get visitors that attend the race. I probably shouldn't say, well, nobody's here from Bristol Motor Speedway. But if it rains, we really do real well. Last year during the dirt race, when it rained out one day, we had over 450 visitors in our museum in one day. So, we do get that. And there was somebody that stopped by our office today thinking they were at the museum that was already here for the race, and that's where they were going. We attend motor coach conferences. Tracy, who does most of those, she and I just returned from ABA back in January when Nashville was completely shut down. It's the worst trip I ever made to Nashville in weather. But on one day, she and I both had, we had 55 appointments with tour operators, asking them to come to Bristol, telling them why they should come to Bristol. We are, one of the things that we are doing this year, we're celebrating 10 years of the museum being open. And one of the things that we did for that, any tour group that's booked this year, because of that, they'll have a $10 admission. We're also celebrating with the Cricket Road 25 years. But since our bus tours, and most of the time, they're booking two to four years out. But we have booked 16 tours since our ABA. So, that's pretty exciting. We're getting, Tracy's getting calls all the time. We are big on education, as you know. It was our seventh year of having our summer piccolo camps. They learn banjo, guitar, and they write songs. They do sessions on the radio. On Friday, they go in downtown and busk. They learn how to dance, play, and perform. They perform on, at graduation. But one of the things that we're proud of, that we have touched quite a few lives and some of our past campers who have grown up to high school students, et cetera, they are coming back and helping with camps. So, we feel like we're touching those lives pretty strongly. And if, when we have it, it would be, it's open to the public on Friday when they do their show to their parents and people that have sent them there. And it's really cool to see how they've come along. We also do school tours, visits, student projects. Those are all the things that we do with education. One of the things that we are proud of, if you're looking at that, that's in Virginia Middle School, I think it is, where we do an after-school program with kids from there. And on that day, they, we go there. And then two different times a year, they come to the museum. They come for a tour. And then they have a family night with their family in the museum. But there, they are learning how to square dance. And Tyler Hughes, who's the Executive Director of the Cricket Road now, always comes and teaches square dancing for us. But we do Family Fun Days. When we do Family Fun Days, that's when we have free days for the community to bring their family in. We also offer discounts to our service individuals. And we work with Virginia Commission for the Arts on their WIC program. So, if someone shows us a WIC card, they get in, I think it's $5 and something, when our normal is $15. We think that we can create community pride and it leads to pro-social behavior. This benefits our society as a whole and leads to helping, sharing, and donating and volunteering. We could not do all that we do from radio, because most of our radio people are volunteer with very few paid ones. Our volunteers that we use during the festival, almost 800. And then in the museum, we have volunteers that are there every day. So, we think that we're involving our community in all that we do. We think that we have created that cycle between residents and tourists, causing a lasting positive and social impact. The people that were here today were from somewhere where it's really cold. I can't remember the city. But they were talking, asking about our weather down here in the winter. Was it really cold and we have a lot of snow? And we said, well, we think it's pretty cold, but it's not really cold compared to some places. And they say, well, we're thinking about trying to get away from all that cold and all that snow. So, we told them this is a perfect price for them. Is that my last one? I won't move forward. We think with Bristol, Virginia's support, we will continue to be a positive impact and a sought-after destination for visitors and create pride in our community. One more. That was a thank you. That just passed by. So, thank you for letting me present tonight and for all the support that you give us, not only financially, but with your city services. We're blessed with them. I know that when we put on events, they go home tired and they work hard through the whole event. But we are blessed with people that come out and support us.
There we go. Thank you, Leah, for that great presentation. I'll open it up to see if there's any questions from the council.
Just wanted to say thank you to you and to all your staff with all the work you do. And just a quick note, you mentioned the Rhythm and Roots reunion and the attendance level. And I've heard great things about the announcement of the lineup this year. So, I'd say this year, this will be a big one this year, for sure. So, looking forward to it and thank you all for the work you do.
One thing that I did forget to mention is that we are doing a new event, as you all well know, in the Pines. And we're really excited about that and making that grow and having another major event in our downtown that brings visitors and economic benefit to all of us.
And that's Saturday, June the first.
Saturday, June the first.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you, Leah, for all that you do, you and your team do. We know it's, the musical heritage of Bristol is something truly, I don't know the right, special. Thank you. I couldn't think of the word. It's something that, once you dive into it and realize what's there, it's truly something that is special, that is something that nobody else has. Thank you for stewarding that, for working on that, for the museum preserving that. You all have a tremendous impact on our region. As Councilman Farnum mentioned, the Rhythm and Roots, just looking at the lodging taxes, the pure numbers of it during September, holy cow, you guys bring in the people. And that's what we need. We need more tourism, more people from outside the region spending their money here. So, thank you for being a part of that. And I will say, if you ever want to change the mural in the Emergent Theater, I would be more than happy to help you with that. I'm tired of looking at my face on the wall there. You can take it down.
Governor Youngkin saw you.
Thank you, Leah, for the presentation. You know, talking about Rhythm and Roots, I know you said that there was a 5,000 increase from 2022, which I think is a big deal. And I know that, you know, with the acts you've got for this year for Ashley McBride and 49 Winchester, probably that 5,000 increase was everybody in Castlewood coming to see 49 Winchester.
I know. They didn't have any restaurant eating thing in that time. They were all here.
Everybody showed up. But no, I think you all do a great job. Obviously, with Rhythm and Roots and with the museum, it's really, I don't remember where I was, but the other day, we were, I was talking to somebody about downtown. And they said that the museum was kind of one of the big things that kicked off a lot of revitalization in the past 10 years, you know, downtown. And really, having that open up, having it be what it is and be as pretty as it is and be as, you know, noteworthy as it is, I think that is a big driving factor to a lot of the growth and the good stuff we've seen downtown. So, we appreciate it.
I think you're correct. You know, I think that when we embraced our music heritage as being the Birthplace of Country Music, I think sometimes we, maybe we weren't so proud of that, maybe, I don't know. But I think when we did that and we really started seeing the businesses come in, the restaurants come in, that our community has a lot to be proud of.
Yep, you're right. Having the Birthplace of Country Music Museum right here in the heart of our city, a Smithsonian-affiliated museum. I mean, every community in the state would love to have that. And so, it is a jewel and precious to us. So, I'm so glad that it's here and to hear that it's doing well. The festival is my favorite festival. And I know I'm partial because it's Bristol, but we go to a lot of festivals. And I love that festival. I think it's fantastic. And I look forward to it continuing to grow over the years. I just wanted to say thank you, too. I know that I serve on your, on the Birthplace of Country Music Board of Directors. And I know how hard you all work. And so, thank you to you and your team for all the work that you do to be creative, to bring even more visitors to Bristol, such as in the Pines. I think that was a great idea. And I'm looking forward to that because I look for a huge, again, a gigantic crowd that wouldn't normally be here on June 1st, coming to Bristol to be at that concert. So, great job to you all and thank you for all that you do for Bristol.
Thank you. We do have a great staff who really loves this organization and pours their heart into it every day.
Yeah, and I'll have to brag on you, Leah, as well. I will say, I don't know how many times, we were in Richmond and you were right up there, too. And so, thank you for always advocating, I know, for Birthplace of Country Music, but for the city. So, we appreciate you being a face for us.
Well, we wouldn't be where we are if we didn't have the city. Thank you.
All right. Next on the list, Explore Bristol. I believe Matt Bolus is here.
Good evening. I'm Matt Bolus. I'm Executive Director of Explore Bristol. Appreciate your time tonight. I have a lot of slides, but I'm going quick. I could probably have a 100-slide presentation if we went through all the marketing and you all would throw me out the door. So, I won't do that to you. So, I'm going to jump on in. We are very excited to market the city. We are very proud of what we have here in Bristol. There are so many things that are new and coming to Bristol that we are at a, at a point where we don't know where we're heading. We just know it's going to be great. We have major new attractions coming through. So, I'm going to jump right on in. I put this up here to show a little bit of the advertising we've done over the past year. And I put the Tennessee Vacation Guide and the Virginia Travel Guide in here. And the reason why I wanted to show you is Tennessee Guide and the Virginia Guide. On the left is the Tennessee Guide. And you can see, you know, the Birthplace of Country Music Museum. You can see the casino and the advertising. We are probably the only community that is fortunate to get our attractions in both states. If they haven't figured that out, don't tell them. But that's great because the Virginia Travel Guide includes Bristol Motor Speedway. And conversely, Tennessee Travel Guide includes the Birthplace of Country Museum Casino and all those things. But it's our uniqueness that allow us to do that. So, I just wanted to show a little bit about what we do. We do an abatorial style on the right, which is the Travel Guide. I think it came out great. There's also ads that are on the opposite page from Hard Rock and the Birthplace of Country Music that drive directly to them. Social media, if you follow Explore Bristol, especially our Facebook, we do a lot. We're the largest, have the largest social following of any tourism office in this region. And also, I wanted to show some comparisons to what, you know, Greenville, South Carolina, which is a great bustling city, Knoxville, we have more than they do. We focus a lot on our social activities. We post every day, sometimes two and three times a day. Race Week, it's about four times a day. There's a lot going on. And we wanted to showcase, what we use this for is to drive people to our website, to plan trips, spend money, shop, eat, dine. But we also drive to our partners, whether it's an event, whether it's, you know, right now it's Race Week, as you can see going through. And, you know, we have a lot of impressions and followers that come through that. If you just look at where we are in this past fiscal year, from July 1 through the end of February, we have 6.1 million impressions. And when you equate that down, it's about a $78,000 or $75,000 ROI just from us doing social, promoting to those different companies and sending them there. I'm just showing three of the, three of the items that were the top items. Just on Facebook alone, it was in the Pines. It was Union 41 and the Art Festival in October. So, we do a lot of social because it drives people to Bristol. It drives people to our partners and they book hotels and they book rooms. So, we always have a call to action to either get tickets at an event, book a hotel room, or learn more about our community at Explore Bristol. Some of these videos I'm going to go through, I'm not going to let you watch them all. You'll have to go on our page. We'll be here all night. But video and photo creation is something that's really big for us. This is one we did for Mendota Trail. We had, we bring in social influencers like Jared Christ. You all probably know him. He's from here. He's from this area. And he goes out and does Gatlinburg to, well, he's worldwide. He's everywhere. And he comes back. And when he's back in town. And he comes back, and when he, when he's back in town, we're like, hey, when you're visiting the parents, give us a call, you know, and he'll, we'll do some things and partner with him. But we're very excited about Mendota Trail and pushing that. Here's one of, if y'all know Flat Rock, if you've ever been there, this is a, one of our largest viewed videos that we had that overlooks South Holston Lake. It's beautiful. It drives a lot of interest. And just from this one video, we had over 4,500 people click to us. I mean, that is the goal of where, getting these people from out of state, Tennessee, Florida, Virginia, you can see all the different locations. But I will, I will say that video and photo creation is very important because we also share those. For example, Atlanta Journal Constitution was in town. There was a great article that came out, multiple pages in the Sunday Edition in November. They stayed at the Bristol Hotel. They stayed at the Sessions Hotel. We provided them all the photography that they could possibly need. We edited and assisted them on their story to make sure it was, it was accurate. Those are things that we do that you probably don't see that are behind the scenes. We have media coming through all the time. But having those resources that we can allow businesses and different entities to use, whether it's the Birthplace of Country Music, Believe in Bristol, you know, Turtleson Shirt Company, Asfor, we've had different people that, we, we share our assets with anyone. Anytime the city needs them, we share them to the city because we want people to promote this community in their own ways as well, through their own channels. Going to the airport, this is a very bold ad if you've flown out of tri-cities. It's a very bold ad. We, we've gotten a lot of compliments from it. We've had people from, we've had race car drivers do live streams in front of it. We've had all kinds of selfies come from it. Reason why we put that in the airport is the vast majority of people that are flying in aren't necessarily flying in to come to Bristol. We want the ones that are going for business travel, whether it's Eastman and Kingsport, or they're going to Johnson City, or wherever they're going in southwest Virginia. But we want to remind them while they're captured, before they can get on a plane, that there's a lot going on in Bristol and to come back. And it's also a welcome to those visitors that are coming. We are working hard with the airport. I was actually in Arizona two weeks ago. I was there as part of a delegation to try to, at the Air Service Conference, trying to recruit that Chicago flight. It was a luncheon that we helped sponsor along with Hard Rock. They, they put a financial supporter behind that to try to bring those, those direct non-stop flights, which are very, very important. I think everyone's heard about Chicago. And there was a lot of interest, I will just say, for this region and the airport. Holiday Christmas, a Christmas, classic Christmas in Bristol. This was something that, you know, we're, I want to talk about partnership. You know, Believe in Bristol comes up with, with, you know, great ideas, great activities, and we work to promote outside the region. You know, they do a great job. Their focus is more in the tri-cities within the local footprint. And our goal is outside the footprint. But I do want to call out some of the creative and the reason why I'm showing it. John Scott, who is back there, if you all haven't met John Scott, he's our Creative Director. He does the, he's a licensed drone pilot. He does the video editing. He does the graphic design. So, he creates all of these things. And we do that all in-house, so we don't have to go to agency. And we save money. That money goes into marketing. So, just want to show you, just a little bit, these are things that we do. We'll take that, create that for entities like Believe in Bristol, and sell, and that way they can promote as well. Here's the Christmas. The, I helped with the Christmas lights and getting two grants through BTS and Bvu to help forward some of those new lights and all of that, partnership with, with Maggie Assisted. And we, I've never decorated a Christmas tree to that scale in my life, but I learned a lot. And I hope you like it. So, we, we also put, because we had that space there, that's a display that we can use at trade shows or use at special events. It's a recreation of the Bristol sign. It keeps people from standing in the road. It's, it's very bold and very bright. We had a lot of compliments for it, so we got to unveil it at Christmas. But it's something we've been working on for almost a year. And we, we are, we would like to thank the city because I worked with the city with those projects as well. And your staff's amazing. I'm going to just tell you, I can only know how to plug in lights. That's it. So, I am not that guy, but I'm going to tell you, it was so helpful that we can all work together, partner. It was tremendous. An example of how we promote Christmas. We promote Christmas. It's a big time for people to travel and spend, but also, for example, whether it's Hoppy Possum or Halloween, we run digital billboards in cities outside of our area. Yes, we run them in the tri-cities because we do want that day tripper to come in. But we'll run them in, these are the locations, if they're available, we will run them in these cities. We've even ran them in, in Nashville and other places before that are larger, if there's availability. But our goal is to get people to spend the night. And so, if you see these in other cities, we'll run them for a week or two and try to get people to come here during the holidays. We did something new and different this year. We worked with Hard Rock in a Win Big in Bristol campaign. We focused on Cherokee, North Carolina. We geofenced their casino. We geofenced their hotel. We ran billboards, the Win Big billboards in digital. We got taken down for a week. I will tell you that. We got back up in a week. So, it, it created some attention, I will say. They were not happy we were advertising over there. However, we do have a lot. So, when you look at the digital ad, it actually rotates, not the, not the billboards, they're not, those can't rotate, but like online, those versions in social, it would rotate from Win Big in Bristol, it'd go from the casino, it'd go to the Speedway, it would go to the Birthplace of Country Museum in downtown. So, what we have that makes us special is we have a lot of other things going on in our community, and maybe their feelings were hurt a little bit. But that's okay. That's okay. So, we, we did target direct competitors and ran that for a few months, just to see what it would do. And we're going to run that again in the spring. Oh, I'm going to slide out. These are our results from Winter Wonderland, where we had thousands of clicks and, and many impressions. We do track all the demographics. I won't get into all those so that we know where they're at. And on YouTube alone, we had 147,000 people watch that video that I, I showed before. Print digital, and I apologize for going so fast. Blue Ridge Outdoors Magazine is one I want to highlight. We do six, we've done six full-page abatorial ads so far. Each of them are stories. We show attractions and things that they're doing in the area. It has an outdoor focus each time. So, whether it's doing mountain biking at Chicago, or it's doing the trails on Mendota, or it's doing something at South Holston. But we also throw in other attractions, whether it's the museum. So, there's things to do when you're not out, doing outside activities. We also run in Smoky Mountain Living and some of the other regional publications. And ABA, I think Leah talked a little bit about this. It was in Nashville this year. This is just a little preview video. This kind of shows what we had. We had, we sponsored the booth. We put up the booth. We used some great monies to put the booth up there and be with all the big cities. As you can see, there's so many companies that come. And motor coach is big. We're on the interstate, and that market is really coming back. So, when a bus comes in, you're talking about 50 people, 25 to 30-room nights, each night they come in, all the meals that go along with that. They can spend anywhere from $4,000 to $5,000 a day. So, we, we, this is, since this is the largest ABA, it, we, and it was in Nashville, close, we did a little bit of bigger impression. Coincidentally, we also are going to Tennessee Motor Coach in Johnson City. And we do this collectively. So, we do this with like Hard Rock, Bristol Motor Speedway as tenants, Birthplace of Country Music. It's not duplication because we each take our own parts, but this allows us to be able to be in those, those bigger, bigger arenas. IBMA World of Bluegrass, we go this fall to Raleigh. We see thousands and thousands of people and talk about the Birthplace of Country Music in Bristol. I don't want to say who's most popular in southwest Virginia, but I'm biased. We're very popular in our little corner. You know, you can see Katrina there from the Sessions Hotel. They were there as well. It is a great marketplace. We appreciate Virginia Tourism Corporation. They, they provide some of that sponsorship to allow us to have those booths. And I pretty much ran out of everything in, in that time, which is a good problem to have. You, you want to leave a conference with everything gone. And we do know that people do follow up and come back. So, we look forward to doing that and representing Bristol in the future as well. Our visitor guide, our visitor guide's very, very popular. We're actually in the process of doing a reprint and update. We're waiting for the casino to get their permanent casino open, and we'll have that, that going out. We have to print 10,000 more. We're going through them so quickly that, you know, it's, it's a good problem to have, that you have so many requests for the visitor guide. That just means there's that, that much interest. And again, we do the full distribution along the print distribution service, and we're in welcome centers in Tennessee and Virginia. And digital version online. Google Analytics, that shows a little bit of our, our users and new users and all that. And then some of the cities where we try to make decisions on where we can market. You can see those cities, the ones that have arrows beside them, that's where we've seen them creep up, a spot or two or three over the previous tracking. So, and also regional visits, we put that on the side as well. So, we do have some people in our tri-cities, but we want them to spend their money here, too, whether it's locals that live here or from people within the tri-cities region. I wanted to show this. This is just a six-month snapshot. Bristol, Virginia, your lodging and meals tax, just to look at that. I do know that, you know, some of that looks much higher because you did change the lodging tax collection rate, meals tax collection rate. But I wanted to show you, right now, lodging and meals look, look healthy. And we hope that this money goes even further. That allows you to those services of police, fire, school, and improves the quality of life. Because that's our whole goal, market this city, get people to spend their money, go home. But that money that they leave here, then you all redistribute it and, and do what you need to do to make Bristol, Virginia the best place it can be. So, again, I went fast. I can send you more data, more slides, if you have any follow-up later. But I tried to go real quick. I apologize.
All right. Thank you, Matt. That was a great presentation, and I'll open the floor for the council for any comments.
Well, I'll lead us off. Thank you, Matt, for being here. Thank you and John. Your, your team of two does a mighty, mighty fine job. We appreciate that. I've enjoyed serving on your board the last couple of months. Data like this is presented almost every meeting. There is a lot going on. There's a lot to present. They're doing some very, very good work for the city. Those numbers of all the other, the cities where people are interested in Bristol, that, that is phenomenal. The reach in Nashville, New York City, just, you guys are doing a great job. We appreciate it. Thank you. Everything is top-notch. The events, the Christmas events were great. I know, I think, I feel like Christmas this year in Bristol is the biggest it's ever been, and it just, it had that hometown Christmas feel, and it was, it was just a good thing for the city, both cities. So, thank you for that. And it's great to have both cities together using one DMO so we can market as a team and just really have that much more expanded reach. Thank you for the work you're doing.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
I like seeing the data analytics that you were showing in there. That way, we can see exactly where our investment's going. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you. We're very transparent, as, as Councilman Holmes said. We, I might bore some of the people on the board that I, I show a lot of data because that, that allows us to know where, you, you mine where there's gold, and we want to know where those people are coming from and what they're spending on. We're just very fortunate. We have a lot to, a lot of different assets that we can attract so many different people. So, thank you.
Yeah, we, we appreciate, appreciate the presentation. And, you know, it, it is, as has been indicated, it's good to see all of those numbers and see the results of, you know, where our money is going. We, we appreciate that, and we appreciate the culture that you all are building as far as tourism and marketing for our, for both of our cities. So, we appreciate it.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. So, I'll just add a couple of comments. First, you're right about when visitors come here, they don't see which side, they don't know if they're in Virginia or for, or they're in Tennessee. So, I think it's great that we do have our marketing under one, under one roof with you being our DMO. You're doing a fantastic job. And I love how we can see there by the numbers, our return on our investment from the city. And just the few notes I made about the, the social media follows, I mean, that's significant for folks that don't understand that. That's a huge, huge number. Your ad at the airport's brilliant. Every time I fly home, I smile when I see that. I love that. And I love how you've really captured both, both sides. You know, Virginia, all of our assets there are key ones. I love seeing that. And then, I don't know how you all go everywhere you go. And I know the birthplace is right there with you, and I see Leah at a lot of those events and her team. But from ABA, that show, it's very important that we're there because, and you might have showed it, I'm not sure, but for all the tour operators that are there that you all have, you know, you do your speed dating with, that end up coming to the birthplace or coming to Bristol, that is huge. And so, if we're not there, they're not going to know about us. So, I'm so glad to hear that you're doing that, as well as, of course, IBMA. And then, Christmas was magical. I loved it this year, and I thought the tree was absolutely gorgeous. I thought the whole downtown just had a, a new sparkle to it. So, thank you for your involvement in that. And I love how also the partnerships to hear how much, all of you all working together. You all believe in Bristol, Birthplace of Country Music. Everyone's working together as a team, and I love to hear that. So, thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Your excuse.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one more of the outside agencies presentations, and we've got the Southwest Virginia EMS Council.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Greg Woods. I'm the Director of the Southwest Virginia EMS Council. With me today is our Board President, J.C. Bowling, and your representative to our Board of Directors is Chief Mike Armstrong. We are a regional organization focused on supporting emergency medical services delivery throughout our service area, which includes 13 counties and three cities in southwest Virginia. Our mission looks complicated, but it's very simple. Basically, we exist to reduce death and disability that arises from emergencies anywhere in southwest Virginia. And we do that through facilitation, coordination, and planning of the regional EMS system. And our vision is to constantly elevate the quality of pre-hospital care and EMS response throughout southwest Virginia.
EMS councils were created back in 1979. There are 11 regional councils throughout the Commonwealth. Our area encompasses three planning districts. The districts were lumped together based upon geographic and demographic needs. So, the three districts for southwest were put together, and we became 501(c)(3), so we can also take advantage of other grants and other opportunities. I have the pleasure of serving as President of our council. Before that, I've spent about three decades here with the city. The council composition of our boards was made up of a representative of each one of the counties and cities that we serve, along with the planning districts at large representation, as well as nursing specialty and hospital representation. We oversee planning and so forth for about 80 emergency medical service agencies and about 1,500 emergency medical service providers throughout the region.
And we are the only organization of our type in southwest Virginia. We're the only office west of Roanoke is where the other one is. We are designated by the State Board of Health for specific programs that we fit into these major areas. Regional infrastructure means that we create a point for everyone who has access to the EMS system, from the individual experiencing an emergency, to dispatchers, local governments, hospitals, physicians, and dispatch. We oversee regional medical direction, meaning we set the standard of care for pre-hospital providers in southwest Virginia, and we write the medical protocols that are used by EMS agencies throughout southwest Virginia. We're the lead agency for regional planning. Much of what we do is focused on ensuring that each patient receives the right care by the right agency, they're transported to the right facility to have a positive outcome. So, we have multiple plans that we coordinate development of to ensure that patients get to the right point of care to have a positive outcome. We're also the leading EMS provider education entity in southwest Virginia, and that includes both community education. And we have components that relate to provider health and safety that we operate 24/7, 365 as well.
We are an accredited emergency medical services training facility. We started out in Washington County. A few decades back, we did bring the office to the city of Bristol. I'm very proud of that. This is our home, too. The folks here presented to you earlier, I want you to know. The folks here presented to you earlier, I want you to know I leverage them as much as I can in bringing committee meetings to Bristol, which also shows our needs and allows us to partake of additional opportunities. One specific class fall, we were able to bring in a communications committee and through that it was a meeting as well as educational event, which we discovered there was some grant opportunities to provide funding for the dispatchers that had not been tapped. So, we were able to bring that back to our area. The training classes we offer within our agency, unfortunately, we don't go out and provide training in each and every agency. We're not big enough to do that and the cost would be astronomical. But by providing said classes, training opportunities within the region, it certainly places it within reach of all emergency service organizations. We student completions for the EMT, we're looking at touching 250 to 300. The advanced student completions, 100 to 150 of those. So, training is a key element, I think Chief Armstrong would echo that. It is a requirement and it elevates the level of professionalism of services being provided. And that being a requirement also makes the potential employee and provider a wanted person. So, competing with other localities, this level's a playing field. We just, we get back, bring training back home.
Yeah, interesting fact as well, we are the only accredited certification training program, one of two, in Southwest Virginia. You, the city of Bristol, house the only accredited EMS training program outside of the community college system. In addition, we have an active community education winged through our community training center with the American Heart Association. And we have a network of more than 200 instructors who are teaching courses both for the public and for providers. We offered through that network 760 CPR and first aid courses last year, 246 advanced training courses and those are aimed at healthcare providers. And we issued more than 5,000 certification cards for emergency cardiovascular care courses. That includes CPR and first aid. And we support other instructors through a lending library that we loan out training equipment and videos. That support the American Heart Association's ECC program as well.
Other programs that we offer, the Critical Incident Stress Management Program. This is to address the mental health of emergency medical service providers. Remember, we have tapped on those a time or two here in my tenure with the city. The Rescue Squad Assistance Fund Grant Program. We are the first level as far as grading, evaluation, evaluating, and making recommendations on those grant applications. And hats off to our review committee chairperson, which happens to be your Fire Chief. But with that, we bring back in each cycle 1.4 million to the region and we have brought back right at $250,000 in grant funding to the city of Bristol in the past five years. The $20,000 worth of equipment that's on permanent loan to the Southwest Virginia Paramedic Program that's inside the community college system. We also coordinate regional emergency medical service awards and the city of Bristol, Virginia Fire Department has received four of those awards over the past five years. We like to recognize excellence in our area. We sponsor state and regional EMS meetings. We bring in our board meeting every quarter and for some reason we seem to be landing quite a few of these state meetings, bringing them back to Bristol. It's an awful easy sell when you have such things as the Birthplace of Country Music to entice outsiders to come in and have meetings here in our city. Three rules always followed, be present, be brief, and be seated. And I'll add a fourth one, be thankful. We are asking for a small contribution from the city budget. For many years, the city did fund the Emergency Medical Services Council. We disappeared out of the funding stream for a while. We would, we ask that we be considered this year. If you can see it to put us back in the budget, we would certainly appreciate that. And we're certainly open for any questions, comments.
All right, thank you all, thank you for that presentation and I'll open the floor. Does anybody have any comments or questions?
I just want to say thank you guys for what you do, we appreciate it. Thank you, Chief Armstrong, for vouching for him and for being a part of it too. The work you all do is very important. I do have two questions for you there. So, I know there's been some issues with the state EMS council and everything there. Can you, can you tell us how that's impacted you all and why the need might be a little greater this year?
Yeah, so as you mentioned, the, the state office of EMS is facing a budget deficit in this year that is significant. We are required, as a condition of our designation by the Board of Health, to match funding with local funds. To be really direct, some of the funds that we have had in years past from the state office are not assured. So, we really don't know the overall impact of those, of that budget crisis yet. We anticipate that, that funding will be reduced, which means that we need even greater local support in order to be able to support the, the heroes that are serving in our communities.
Thank you for that.
You're very welcome.
All right, no more questions? Thank you all for that presentation, thank you for what you do, we really appreciate it and thank you for coming out here tonight.
Can I offer a few comments?
You sure can.
Miss, Madam Mayor and members of council, I'd just like to echo what these gentlemen have said. About every single Bristol firefighter has been trained as EMTs to their council. And we're at the point now, we'll hire somebody with no training and figure out how to get them firefighter trained and certified and then we ship them off to these guys to get EMT certified. And then within a few years later, we'll send them back to get their advanced life support training. And that's becoming a big thing. You know, while we've been in this meeting, our guys have went out on a heart attack call over in Station 2's territory. So, it's non-stop, we're running 10 calls a day on that ambulance and it's, the need is just growing more and more. And I just, I can't thank them enough for what they do and I totally support their request.
Okay, thank you for that, thank you. All right, I believe we will take just a quick five-minute recess if we can. Okay, we're going to get started with the next item on the agenda and that is the supplemental appropriation of $950,000 and we'll look for a staff report and I believe that's going to come from Tamara Spredlin.
Thank you. Mayor and members of council, this agenda item is an appropriation, a supplemental appropriation of $950,000 to appropriate revenue and expenditures for the school activity funds per updated financial guidance. This appropriation does not require any additional city funds. And per the letter from the school board to the city, the supplemental appropriation will create a new fund titled School Activity Fund with a total appropriation of $950,000. And once again, this does not require any additional city funds and staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed.
Okay, thank you for that. We're looking for a council motion and second.
Sir, move.
Second.
All right, we got a move by Councilman Pollard and second by the Vice Mayor. Council discussion.
This is just one of those, I guess it was probably proposed by an auditor.
Yes, the Virginia guidance changed that you have to report the school activity funds in the annual financial report now.
Like we've had after our audits, they have these minor recommendations on how to change something around and they've had one and they've got to adjust for it.
Yes.
All right, no further discussion. Clerk, please call the roll. Farnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Okay, Presentation of Fiscal Year 2024-2025 Updated Budget Calendar. Staff report, Tamara.
Actually, I'll take care of this one.
All right.
Counsel, this is just a, we've had a minor tweak to the budget calendar. We previously presented this calendar, I think at the end of January. And you can see, we are now on March 12th for the outside agency presentation. We have a budget workshop on Saturday, March 16th at 9:00 a.m. And then I was going to present the budget on March 28th. However, due to where we're at in the budget process at this point and knowing the obstacles that we have to overcome, I'm now going to present the budget on April 9th. Now, with the presentation of the budget on April 9th, the tax rate resolution will also have to go that same night as well. In years past, we've waited either a couple of nights for the tax rate resolution or maybe to the next meeting. But with this year and the timing of everything, the tax rate resolution will have to be adopted on the same night. I do not plan on presenting a budget that would include an increase in taxes nor do I plan on presenting a budget that would lower taxes. So, the taxes that we'll present would stay the same for the real estate taxes. And everything else remains the same as far as the budget deadline.
All right, thank you for the changes on that. I know that when we first said it, it was like some of us didn't have some things on our calendar, so I appreciate you all working with us on those times. Any discussion from the council? All right, moving into the next item, ordinances, second reading. An ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter 78, Article 5, Section 78-133 and 78-135 pertaining to real estate tax exemptions for elderly and handicap. Public comment, no one has signed up for public comment on that and we'll look for the staff report from Randy.
Counsel, the proposed changes are to increase the income limit to $35,000 and increase the net worth to $50,000. These changes would enable more two-person households to possibly qualify for the exemption. A discussion to amend the ordinance was held at the February 13th, 2024 meeting and the first reading of the ordinance was February 27th, 2024. The red line version is attached with the changes.
Okay, we are looking for a council motion and second, for second reading, full or by caption only.
I move.
I move for a second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Pollard. Council discussion.
This is something that needs to be done periodically. Sometimes we overlook it because, well, we've got a lot of stuff going on. But in order to protect particularly the low-income residents of our community, we need to periodically review and adjust the real estate tax exemptions so that it's adjusted for, well, just regular inflation. And that's basically what we're doing. And we can consider some additional adjustments later, but right now, because, simply because we don't know the exact impact on the budget, we'll, we'll need to take it a step at a time. And this is what we're doing, proposing, accepting tonight will be a tremendous benefit for a lot of our low-income residents.
I would have to agree with Councilman Pollard too. I, I think this is a, a good thing to do on a regular basis, just to reevaluate this. I know it's been a little while since we've done it. So, let's, let's do this, see how it, how it goes and then maybe next year we can take another look or a year or two. Just kind of try to keep an eye on this going forward.
We want to make sure to express our appreciation to Commissioner Revenue for proposing the details here. We're really grateful.
Yeah, I'm glad that we have, I'm glad we have the opportunity to, to do this. It's not often that we have an opportunity to do something that, you know, will just help people, you know, with, with no, no big negative ramifications. And this is not, this is an opportunity to, to be able to help some people who need help without any, anything big, significant happening to the city in a negative way. So, so I'm glad, I appreciate Commissioner Revenue for bringing this to us. I know she's worked on it and I look forward to adopting this.
Yes, I'll agree with you all. I think it's been too long since we've looked at this and so even though it's a small amount, it will go a long way and extremely help those that are elderly or handicapped and could use that extra assistance. So, I appreciate that she's brought that to our attention as well. All right, with no further discussion, Clerk, please call the roll. Farnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Reading of ordinance.
An ordinance to amend City Code, Chapter 78, Article 5, Section 78-133 and 78-135 pertaining to real estate tax exemptions for elderly and handicapped.
All right, I'm looking for a council motion and second for adoption.
I move for adoption of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by the Vice Mayor. Clerk, please call the roll. Farnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
All right, next we have matters to be presented by members of the public, non-agenda items and we thank you all for sticking around with us tonight. I know it's been a, a long evening. First on the list, and I'm sorry if I mispronounce your name, we have Nilda Cruz Partica. Did I get it a little bit right? Okay. Please come to the podium and state your name and address and you have three minutes.
Good evening, my name is Nilda Cruz Partica. I live at 2421 Randolph Street in Bristol. Thank you so much for having me tonight and good evening to all. I'm here representing the residents and the neighboring streets of Randolph, Catherine, Monroe, et cetera, in that area. For the last two months, we have been experiencing a extreme decrease in water pressure. We have been wrestling with the water company. All of us have called, some of them have had the water company come to their home and they say there's absolutely nothing wrong. When living in the house now is like living in a camper where you get that little drizzle of water for all the things we have to do. Today, we called again, I called myself this morning and the young lady told us that the Carter Street or Avenue Water Tower had been closed and we had been moved to another tower and that that was the pressure, there was too much pressure over there and that they reduced the pressure. And we said, but this isn't, you know, a, a sustainable pressure for us. And they said that there was nothing they could really do. And we were hoping and that, I mean, there's a petition going around the neighborhood, they're trying to get the press involved and everything because they're frustrated with the water company and I was hoping to enlist your help in anything you can do to help us.
All right, thank you for bringing that to our attention and we will follow up on it with the BBU.
And Mayor Nave, just as a, a side note, because I'm the one on the council that also sits on the BBU board, so we'll definitely look into this. I haven't heard anything about it, so we appreciate you bringing it to our attention and...
Really, because for the last two months, they've been bombarded with calls.
Yes.
A young man, an elderly person down in, on Catherine Street, you know, he's, he's struggling with his wife who's, you know, bedridden and it's a real burden on him. So, anything you can do would be really appreciated.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Clinton Hallman.
I spoke with him, so I've got that issue taken care of.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. All right, next consent agenda, approval of minutes of the February 27th, 2024 city council meeting. We are looking for a council motion and second.
Madam Mayor, one question on that. I was not in attendance for that agenda or the minutes. Should I just abstain from the consent agenda vote in total?
Yes.
Yes, because it's only the one that we're voting on, so yes, you can just abstain.
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Councilman Farnum. Clerk, please call the roll. Farnum.
Yes.
Holmes.
Abstain.
Osborne.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
And that is it for our agenda and we stand adjourned.